Item six.
Item six, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty-ten dash six-oh-three dash C U. An ordinance allowing a conditional use permit to sell on-premises alcohol for lot one of block one of El Chaparral Commercial Section Three, located at eight hundred East Alton Glor Boulevard.
I don't know, Mayor and City Commissioners, that's the property that it read it, it's an existing restaurant. They would like to sell with their meals, beer and wine. The plans of the commission had the public hearing and recommended this application for your approval.
Okay, this is a public hearing, is there any opposition to this? Permit? No? Can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Truani.
I would second.
Second by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, this is an action item, can I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion to approve Commissioner Samora. Can I have a second? Second by Commissioner Truani. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item seven.
Item seven, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty-ten dash six-oh-four dash C U. An ordinance allowing a conditional use permit to sell on-premise alcohol for lot two, block thirty-six, of Brownsville original townsite located at nine fifty East Levy Street.
I don't know, Mayor and City Commissioners, this, this business will be located in Levy Street in downtown. It's, it's a bar, to be, to be developed in one of the buildings that is vacant on Levy Street. The plans on the commission voted unanimous to approve this application for your approval. It's a public.
This is a public hearing. You know, Ben, I have promoted, and I think I've talked to you about this, I wish that no more permits to open up establishments that sells beer or liquor would be done outside the downtown areas, so we could revitalize downtown, similar to, to other cities that do the same thing. Perhaps that'd be something that you could look into in the presenting the commission, to restrict the issuing of alcohol permits outside a zone. And perhaps that would help us redevelop downtown.
I will come, Mayor, in the next couple of meetings.
Ben, just to let you know that Attorney Mark Sassi and with the city Charlie Cabler are already looking into that. They're looking for the model that was used in McAllen, that supposedly was modeled after some people from Brownsville, so. That's already on its way, it's already, it should be coming in pretty soon, but we have to pass an ordinance to do that.
Go ahead, Ben.
Yes.
I had not recognized him, but he's gonna talk.
No, I just wanted to mention, Mayor, that, that we are looking into that, not only at this issue, but also working of a more comprehensive plan for downtown, involving more flexible codes, maybe waiving of permits and such as these fees for this type of establishments, but also having a facade improvement program. I think there's a lot of interest in downtown now.
We've been talking about this, this particular plan for a year, and when do, can we expect something to come before us?
I, I will, I will present that to you at the end of the second meeting in May.
Okay, that sounds good, at least we have a timeframe here. Okay, this is a public hearing, do you have a motion to close?
I would like to speak. Although I don't share the mayor's enthusiasm about holding it in one particular area for the whole city, I do thank the people that are starting to look into downtown, and that are starting to bring their business to downtown, especially within this. I know that you and I have been working for years on the program, on, on being able to revitalize downtown and be able, along with Commissioner Camarillo in the recent years, so that we can start looking into downtown, at how we're gonna revitalize it, and how we're gonna have that entertainment district, so. You know, thank you to them, and to all the people, you know, people like my Bell, Mike Belleville, and all these people that are looking into downtown, investing it, and having faith in downtown, so we look forward to your report, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Longoria. This is a public hearing, can I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion to close, but Commissioner Camarillo can have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, this is an action item?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Commissioner Camarillo, can I have a second? Second by Commissioner Samora, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item eight.
Item eight, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number C L twenty-ten dash zero-zero-one, to allow a game arcade at sixteen fifty-five FM eight oh-two, suite two oh-seven.
There's a class L permit, Mayor and City Commissioners, for an arcade located at the location, and there's a map there, and also in the packet, there's a little site plan, La Placita Center, that's right across, dangly across from the I B C Bank, and other establishments there in La Placita, but, but the plans on, I'm sorry, this is a class L for, for a, for an arcade, and it, it comes to you for your approval. I think, I spoke to Mr. Truani this afternoon regarding this application, to brief him on it, but the, the issue came up of a moratorium. I do remember the, the issue coming up, but I spoke to our billing permit officer and director, he believes that was lifted. I spoke to Stella, and, and we couldn't get to it in the, in the short time this afternoon, but, but he assures me that it, that there's no moratorium, that the, Mr. Gallant.
Well, it didn't pass, the last time it came before the commission, or it was just left away, what, left away it is, it was left off or something like that. Motion to close?
Okay, we haven't even asked for that. Is there any objection, anybody from the public here? This is a public hearing, okay? Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
We are motion to close, but Commissioner Camarillo can have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samora. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, this is an action item. Can I have a motion? Can I have a motion to, motion to pass by Commissioner Gallant, can I have a second? Can I have a second? No, we already closed the meeting, now this is an action item.
The action.
Okay, that, your motion stands, right?
To approve.
Do you have a second? No second? I'll second it. All in favor? Oh, let me, let me go on the record, I spoke to the chief of police, didn't see any problem with it, so I'm gonna go ahead and second it. All in favor? Aye. No, no, if you're confused, let's clarify, it's, it happens to all of us, okay? What is, what is it you're confused about?
Well, I was not sure what, what my motion was, I thought I was moving to.
Withdraw the motion?
Yes.
Commissioner Gallant withdraws the motion, okay?
I asked for a motion.
You got a second for withdrawing it?
Second.
Second, okay, we have a second by Commissioner Truani to withdraw, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, this is a public hearing, now this is an action item. Staff has no problem with the passage of this?
No.
Okay, I talked to the police chief, he told me as long as they're not issuing cash prizes, he has no problem, it's legal. So, Commissioner Truani, do you have a question?
I just have a comment, I'd like to see something formal that indicates that the moratorium has been lifted or did not pass, I understand that Mr. Medina is saying that it is not in place at this point. My understanding was that we had a moratorium, if we don't, that's fine, I would vote against this at this point.
You'd vote against it?
Against allowing the, the arcade at this point.
Well, I haven't brought it to vote, but they, that, he made his opinion. I understand, I'm just making a point.
Editorial.
We haven't asked for a vote yet, okay, is there any other discussion?
I think, Mayor, that whether or not the, the arcade says, you know, that they're not going to, you know, they're not gonna conduct any illegal activity, I, I still think that we don't know that for sure, and I think every arcade in town, at some point, has, has had issues, and as we heard chief, months ago, if not a year, two years ago, indicate that this, that these arcades were funneling, obviously, activity, you know, not just locally, but throughout the country, and so. I have to stand with Commissioner Truani, is I, I don't wanna, I won't support this, I won't support this item.
So, we don't have a, any, anybody making the motion?
No.
I move to, I'd move to deny.
Okay, you have a motion to deny, one by Commissioner Longoria, and we have a second, Commissioner Truani to deny. All in favor to deny?
Aye.
All opposed, I'll abstain. Okay, so how many are to deny, raise your hands?
Everybody.
Raise your hands, 'cause I, not everybody spoke out. Okay, you got it, see this secretary?
Yes, sir.
Okay, next item, nine.
Item number nine, public hearing in action to authorize the issuance of a new taxicab permit to Mr. Valeriano Solis on a two thousand and one Chevy Astro van that we, that will be operating for Bay Taxi Company.
Mayor, members of the city commission, good evening, I think the, the item speaks for itself, for allowing Mr. Valeriano Solis to operate a two thousand and one Chevy Astro van on behalf of Bay Taxi Company. If allowed, it's, it's still under the number of permits that are allowed by, by the city ordinance, which is a hundred and twenty-five, this would put us somewhere around seventy permits, so.
This is a public hearing?
And it's, it's met all the requirements by the city ordinance.
This is a public hearing, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
We are motion by Commissioner Truani, second by Commissioner Longoria. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. This is an action item, can I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Truani, second by Commissioner Samora. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item ten, public comment.
We'll go to the public comment, before I call the people up to, to, to speak, I want to make it very clearly, this individual speak on their behalf. They don't have no title, or no, they're not elected officials, as far as what I see here, they don't speak for citizens of Brownsville. They speak individually. A lot of people can say, I speak for so many, but they don't have that authority. I have people that come here, that don't offer nothing constructive, it's all negativism, and we have to listen to them, we cannot respond to it. In many instances, a lot of the, what you hear is not accurate, and they're either misinformed, or deliberately trying to misinform, and that's very unfortunate. A gentleman came up here, called, said it was a circus up here, but what I've seen from the history of the public comments, those that make it a circus is the people that come up here, that could easily address the situation with city management, or staff, and take care of those things, and some of those things don't even exist, they're mood issues, but they like to get the attention, and they use a public comment to do so. That's their right, and they're entitled to, but I want the public to understand, they don't speak for the citizens of Brownsville, they speak only for themselves. And we cannot respond, even if when we know, they're putting out inaccurate information, or they're misleading. So weigh things with a grain of salt, when you hear people speak, I encourage people to speak, but I particularly encourage people to come and bring constructive criticism, anything that will help us build a better community, but just to be blasted, to be blasted, makes it kind of embarrassing. Okay, the first one, we welcome Juan Mejia, from, he has to address the sewer line. Mr. Mejia.
I was here April sixth, about sewer problem, I'm with Almito Water Supply Corporation, and it's a problem there on Long Max Road, eight oh-three, and I've understood it. Almito Corporation, small corporation, we can get some loans, but we can't afford to pay them back, we have to raise the rates up so high.
Mr. Mejia?
Yes, sir.
Let me interrupt you, because this is for the benefit of what you're here, okay, and I have that authority to do so. I forwarded your request to P U B, unfortunately, things don't move as fast as people like to, but your request has been forwarded to P U B. The sewer line problem, that's a P U B matter, but we're, we're welcome for you to stay to here, but I encourage you to contact somebody at P U B. Somebody from P U B should be contacting you, because I did forward you.
I did contact Mr. McMahon, or McCannon, something like, McCannon.
He's on the electrical side, you need to contact Gigi Gomez.
Who?
Gigi Gomez.
Jesse Gomez?
Genova Gomez, on the water side.
All right, how about the lighting, lighting on, on Long Max Road?
There, you're talking to the right man, Mr. James McCann.
And, Long Max Road, mile long, mile stretch, okay? Mr. Cabler helped us with one hump, one hump, but we need two more humps there, because there are two neighborhoods, a mile, oh, excuse me. We just got one hump there, and once that past hump going north, it's straight away, one straight mile, and we need at least two more humps, to slow the traffic down. That's it, and like I said, that's all I gotta say, I hope you can fix it up, or do something with it, Melissa, that's your neighborhood there, your, your district. Okay? Thank you much.
Thank you, Mr. Mejia, thank you. Mr. Odeste. Robert Odeste. Twelve twenty, Calle Pluton.
Roberto Odeste, twelve twenty, Calle Pluton. My discussion will be basically on many things, number one is about the Lindell and the Fourteenth Street paving that's gonna be done, the difference is twenty-eight thousand. I was giving these papers by the purchasing directors, and as I went through these papers, I found out that the engineer made a lot of mistakes, enormous mistakes, they couldn't multiply correctly, all this page, by the thousands of dollars. Here's one example. Eight dollars, it was the estimated bid, it's supposed to be, and he puts ninety-one thousand fifty-six dollars. If you look at this paper now, Mr. Luna said, say that it wasn't their mistakes, no, it wasn't the mistake of the purchasing department, but when this is turned in, and has so many mistakes on this road, something is wrong, by this engineering company. And this is a shame, because if they cannot multiply, then something is wrong. And I went through this paper, and my goodness, it's horrible. Number two, why is, why is Fourteenth Street gonna cost only twenty-eight thousand difference than Lindell? Lindell is only one quarter of a mile, it doesn't need that much repair, because I lived there almost twenty-something years. Fourteenth Street is gonna be half a mile, so that's a lot of difference of the money. Somebody is charging a little over price on this thing, so it makes a concern. If you're not being down to Lindell, sir, go check it out, it's only one small piece that needs to be repaired, that's where the buzz is. Number two, I'd like to talk about firemen smoking at the, their buildings, on Calle Pluton and Military, I saw the firemen smoking inside. I didn't know they could smoke inside, I thought they were not supposed to smoke in there, but that's something that should be taken care of. Number two, number three, I'm sorry, on Saturday, at quarter till five, at twelve twenty, Calle Pluton, there was a dogfight, in which two pit bulls attacked the neighbor's dog, went into it, somebody else's neighbor, and three men were trying to take the dog off the neck of the other dog, he tore it apart. I called the police, when the policeman arrives, he tells me, "Two of them?" I said, "Yes, I did," and so did the lady. He just got off, and didn't care. Well, it seems like, I felt, that if you're gonna be treating the people of the Galaxia, and I talked to the neighbors, is this the way we're gonna be treated there, like garbage? We're not, this is the most shameful thing, when we need help, we don't get it. Today, an old lady keeps crossing the street, and she has this horrible, horrible time crossing from Galaxia across the street to Military. She almost gets killed almost all the time, and you haven't done a thing.
The show's over?
Mr. Resendez.
Alex Resendez.
My name is Alex Resendez. I believe I've got three minutes. I've got a lot to say, but I don't think I'm gonna cover, not even, not even a little bit. I've got some pictures there, if you allow us to put them on, it's something over there on Fourteenth Street, what they're doing constructions. I would appreciate it. My name is Reverend Alex Resendez, with all due respect, Mayor.
Can you put a little more clarity there? There you go, I think that's better.
With all due respect, Mayor, to you, and to your commissioners, we come here, and I will tell you something, you don't know how many people we represent. You said we do not represent people, I am the chairman of Concerned Citizens Committee, sometimes I have a lot of people there, sometimes I don't. And these people tell us.
Then you need to come and say, you're here on behalf of the committee.
No, I'm not, I'm not here on behalf, I never said that, I've never said that. But to you, to say what you said, is very disrespectful. We come here to address issues, to see what you can do for them, and actually, we're helping you, if you, if you see it that way. Okay, first of all, this is Fourteenth Street, somebody invited me for some coffee at Oasis, Oasis Restaurant, Oasis Restaurant in Fourteenth Street. And, well, I didn't know where to park, this is Fourteenth Street. When I got into Fourteenth Street from the expressway, all the way from the expressway to Oasis Restaurante, which is right there on the side, the bridge, international bridge, ahí se tapa, right there's a, you're, they're doing construction for the international bridge or something. Está la relanueva, okay, that's Fourteenth Street.
That's a multimodal bus terminal.
Algo así, something, I guess something big, ¿me entiendes? Este, anyway, the construction that they're doing there, but what, what I'm trying to say is that toda la calle, all Fourteenth Street, estaba llena de pozos. It's all, I, I, you can go look at it if you want to, you know, it's not here that I'm bringing, it's big potholes, man. I've got a pretty nice car here, and I boom, 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 bring it into, all Fourteenth Street. If you're doing construction aquí, and you're gonna finish the construction in six months, or I don't know how long, you should consider fixing Fourteenth Street. What do you got to say to that? Is it okay, can you fix Fourteenth Street for us?
We need to put something on top of it.
Okay, ah, okay, I'm sorry, ah, I'm sorry, okay, I wanna congratulate this man, Atkinson, porque he did defend the citizens of Brownsville, when, when this guy was saying about the rates of the P U B. And he did say that you went to raise the rates, and, well, I mean, he thought it was okay.
That's my three minutes?
Time's up, yes, sir.
Ben, need to fill in.
It looked like longer, but it was.
You, you, you witnessed it, that's three minutes?
You don't have to witness it.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Resendez, my, my office is always available to you, and I'm sure city manager is always available to you, if you ever want to address concerns.
You cannot speak, you are what, three minutes?
Yeah, I'll give you more in three minutes.
I can hear you.
Okay? Thank you, Mr. Resendez. And that goes for any citizen who has any concerns, and wants to address it with management, or a commissioner, or myself, I've, I'm available, anytime. And I return my calls. Okay, action item number eleven.
Item eleven, consideration in action to adopt resolution number twenty-ten dash zero-zero-four, to authorize the city manager, Mr. Charlie Cabler, to accept the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars from the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division for fiscal years twenty-ten through twenty-eleven.
Members, Mayor, members of the city commission, good evening, once again, this resolution will authorize the city manager to accept the grant award in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars, that will be utilized to continue to upgrade our communication centers, so that we can be P two-five compatible for the year two thousand fourteen.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Action item?
Second.
I mean, I'm sorry, motion to approve, Commissioner Longoria, second by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, item twelve.
Thank you.
Item twelve, consideration in action on a lease with S R A Automotive for a portion of building number seventeen A, at the Brownsville South Padre Allen International Airport.
Mr. Brown.
Mayor and city commissioners, the city commission is asked to consider an act on a lease for twenty-three thousand two hundred square feet in building seventeen A, with S R A Incorporated. S R A Incorporated is a, a ten-year-old Maculador type operation, they'll be manufacturing parts in the building, it's a two-year lease, represents total annual revenue to the airport of forty-one thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. The airport advisory board recommends approval, as does staff.
Okay, this is an action item, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Camarillo, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Longoria, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, item thirteen.
Item thirteen, consideration in action to adopt budget amendment resolution number twenty-ten dash zero-twenty-nine, to amend the general fund, convention and tourism fund, community development fund, landfill tipping fee increase fund, two thousand and eight certificate of obligation fund, airport fund, motor vehicle parking system fund, public transit, and the Brownsville Golf Center fund, to provide funding to cover the required costs to employee retirement, Texas Municipal Retirement System Fund during fiscal year twenty-ten.
Excuse me, Admiral Mayor, members of the city commission, when we began working on our budget in fiscal year two thousand nine and two thousand ten, we came upon the fact that we were not going to be able to contribute enough to the retirement system, because of the conditions that we, we had, that we knew of at the two thousand nine and two thousand ten. So we went ahead, and during the budget process, we, we budgeted the facing rate instead of the full rate, which caused a, a deficit in our contribution to the retirement system. Going back to two thousand nine, the budget for two thousand nine, we had an estimated fund balance of eleven million four hundred and six, four hundred and six, eleven million four. That was our estimated fund balance, we ended the year with a, a better fund balance of seventeen million, over seventeen million, which was a plus of five point five million. So, we did, in two thousand nine, we did have, we generated three point two million dollars less in revenues, but when we look at the expenses, we didn't spend what we had originally budgeted, so that, that created excess funds, and we are now coming back to you to, to ask for you to go ahead and, and contribute some of that portion that we did not contribute to the retirement system during that particular, during that particular year. The T M R S allows us to, allows the cities to put in a facing rate with later on, to fund the full rate at a later period. We find now that this is the right time to, to fund this, this particular T M R S additional rate contribution, and so we recommend that you approve this budget amendment, which there are funds available, based on the fact that we did not spend what was budgeted in two thousand nine.
Thank you, Pete, this is an action item, can I have a motion?
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, second by Commissioner Camarillo, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item fourteen.
Item fourteen, consideration in action to establish an ad hoc infrastructure committee, to evaluate and recommend to the city commission on matters related to transportation, utilities, and drainage, including but not limited to policies, projects, financing, rates, and fees.
I think we're treading on dangerous waters here, because you're, you're abdicating your responsibility to get informed, and be part of being a leader, like staying engaged on those matters that you are concerned of. For somebody to give us opinions that may not be as well-informed as we are, or as well-informed as those we appoint to the boards to oversee those issues of concern, I mean, we appoint members to the P U B board, you can always talk to them. There's, there's, there's many ways that a commissioner or a mayor can stay on, on top of things, by being engaged and getting informed on the issues of concern, to create another committee, we have Imagine Brownsville, to create another committee like that, I think is irresponsible, in my opinion.
Mayor, if I may, on the floor? Well, I disagree.
That's okay.
And let me tell you why, I don't see this as any different as the kayak, and what it does for the land use, so that we can establish an impact fee. In this situation, we're talking about rates for electricity, and, and water and wastewater, and I think that's, that's separate. And I think the group would meet regularly, and report back to the commission regularly, of what's being discussed, where are we at, what are the issues, what needs to be, you know, what really needs to get outlined in a period of time, over a period of time, rather than, here it is, from one meeting to the next meeting, and you vote. I don't, I don't necessarily agree that that's correct, we didn't do that with the impact fee, it was a process, it was a series of, of meetings and discussions and workshops that took place, which I believe we should have the same process in place, when it comes to increasing rates, and looking at the drainage, and all, all these other fees. I think it, I think it's extremely beneficial to the city, to have that group in place, and therefore, that's why, you know, that's why we've asked for this to be on the agenda. I, I only see that as beneficial to, to the city of Brownsville, most importantly to the commission, and in, in, in hindsight, of also educating the public, because bringing the public and making them aware of what the process is, could only be good, so, those are my reasons, Mayor.
In response, Commissioner, the impact fee was by law that we had to have that committee, by law, and that was a single issue. Here, you're talking about. Here you're talking about transportation, utilities, drainage, policies, projects, financing, rates, and fees, and it's impossible for a committee that I think is gonna be an expert on these things, and then we're gonna tie up a lot of staff time from all these different entities just so they'll do what you're supposed to be doing as city commissioner. What we're supposed to be doing as, as elected leaders of this community to stay informed on these issues and policies and projects and financing and rates and fees and transportation and utilities and drainage, that's our job.
Mayor, you wanted, hold on, Mayor, you wanted, Mayor, you wanted to have a workshop, as it is, we could only hear one part of the workshop, because we don't have all day, hold on, because we don't have all day. And so, there's a second part that we don't know and the public doesn't know about, and well, when do we plan to hear that? But then, you know, we hear you wanna put this thing on to get a vote and to see where that leads us, whatever that means, that makes no sense whatsoever. So by taking the time, by asking folks to say, you know what, let's look at this, let's work together with the commission and P U B, I don't see how that'd be a wrong thing. In fact, I think I am doing my job. I think by asking folks to get together and let's work things out more frequently, I don't see again how that's a bad thing. So, again, I, I don't understand where you're coming from.
And you can't do that with the P U B board? You can't talk to the P U B board members you appointed? Or the bus board that sits on there and oversees transportation? You can't do that? You can't go to their meetings or watch it on TV, you watch TV, or read Bill Young's releases that keeps you informed of what's going on at P U B? You wouldn't know. Okay, Commissioner Gowen.
Thank you. I think that education is never a wrong choice, it should be what we all strive for, and sitting at another, a P U B meeting or another bus meeting is very informative, I agree with you, but it's not an opportunity to ask questions, and this is a much more efficient way to be able to gather the information, that we all need to make educated decisions instead of making a decision on an isolated thirty-minute workshop when no one has the time to ask the appropriate questions or receive the appropriate answers in a coordinated way. So education is never a wrong answer.
I'd like to talk, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add to that because, you know, the P U B board is unique, man, it's just like, once these people get appointed, they forget about their duty to serve the city. A lot of them do, I'm not saying all of them, but a lot of them, it's just like they get brainwashed into thinking, look, it's, it's, it's us against the city, when I think we're trying to promote, we're all taxpayers and we're all ratepayers. But it just seems like once they get on this board, they get influenced the wrong way. There's a lot of special interests at P U B, more special interests than you will ever believe, okay? These, these, these people get on this board and they get bombarded by special interests that wanna have, these, these special interests have their own interests and not the citizens' interest. I think this committee that's, that, that we're gonna hopefully try to start is just, will come and reinforce what the city wants to do also. It's a two-way communication street because the mayor does sit on that board, but none of that information comes back to any of the commissioners, and then come back to the community, and there's a perception at P U B that, that, that the mayor represents all of us and what we want. Look, the wear-damn issue, you know, one, one month he's for it, he's advocating, next month he comes on the paper, I'm done with it. And then, yes, you did, you came out on the paper and said you were done with it. Then, he wants to come back and say, you know what, I'm gonna try to save it again because I think we can, and this money was already getting toward, we're gonna move it toward the sewer plant, the new sewer plant, so we don't have to ask the ratepayer to, to raise the rates and put the burden back on the ratepayer. But that's where we're at, we gotta have more communication link between the city and P U B, and P U B management up there needs to know that it's not just the mayor's word that it's coming down from the citizens of Brownsville and the commission, and I think this committee would benefit from, and like what Commissioner Gowen's saying, becoming more educated on how the P U B utility system works, to be more educated on what they're doing at P U B, so we can come back and make a more, a better decision for the benefit of the city of Brownsville. I don't see why you're against that.
Okay, anybody else wanna say something? Commissioner Longoria?
Thank you. I'm not a big proponent of committees doing the work that we need to do at times. I know that we have a model in Imagine Brownsville, and Imagine Brownsville has several tasks it needs to undertake. My recommendation on this would be to further give this to Imagine Brownsville and have them deal with the concerns that you have versus creating another committee on this, but like I said, like I told you before when we spoke, this is just my two cents worth. And, you know, I believe, I'm a firm believer in Imagine Brownsville and what it's doing, and I think that this would go with what Imagine Brownsville is doing.
Commissioner Gowen.
I think I would agree with Commissioner Longoria that Imagine Brownsville is about coordinating and better communication, and, and this is another venue to do that and could complement very much the efforts of, of the task forces that are, that are just beginning to be, to investigate how best to serve Brownsville. The, the model as well, as I discussed with several of you, is not just about the P U B, but can be used for other complicated issues like the budget process. It's impossible to sit up here for an hour at a time and understand the vast complexities that Pete and his department go through to determine the budget, and I think that, that that's another means to use this additional way to become educated and communicate.
Commissioner, that's why you have a finance director. If you pick up the phone, I've never heard Pete tell me no when I wanna meet with him over budget concerns. I've never had, I've never had the city manager unwilling to sit down with me to go over issues of concern. That's why we have staff for. You're gonna tie up staff with another committee that you should be doing as the leader representing the community to get informed, to make the decisions before he comes up here with a presentation. You see, we're supposed to be prepared, not when he gets up here, we're supposed to be prepared before he gets up here, to be fully informed, to make those informed decisions by working with staff, working with management, working with P U B, and hearing from the citizens, but to advocate our authority, our leadership position of getting informed to a group of citizens that, that will bring their own prejudices, they won't maybe not devote the time to getting informed on those issues.
Mayor, this, this committee's-
Wait a second, I haven't recognized, I find it very concerning, very disturbing, but that's like Commissioner Longoria said, those are my two cents.
This committee is gonna be based about three of, seven of us here. It's not gonna be people from the community, it's three commissioners from this board who can better assist the rest of the commission on what's going on at P U B, that's all it is. We're not asking citizens to take their time, we're, I don't mind giving my time to go see what's going on at P U B, where they vote on to do a rate increase, I wanna know why. I wanna know why you voted for a rate increase. I wanna go look at the numbers and see everything that's going on and why we, why that board raised the rates and wants to kick it to us now. Not only does that board need to be held accountable, but we all need to be held accountable, and there's nothing wrong with three commissioners volunteering their time if they want to go oversee that, that budget and that process and how you, y'all came about to raising, wanting to raise our rates.
You sit on the M P O, I never see you at those meetings. You're on the M P O board, you never go to those meetings.
It's, it's a board that stagnates, it's overrun by your, your opinions, and you know what, the M P O-
That is totally not true.
I'm gonna tell you, that's the way it is, whether you wanna hear it or not.
And that's sad that you're saying that. It's very sad because we have Rancho Viejo, Port Isabel, we have all the municipalities, Harlingen-
What have y'all done?
You know?
In three years, I wanna see what the M P O has done.
Millions of dollars, and we did a presentation, you obviously did not even listen to.
Mayor, this has meant, Mayor, we can get back to the point, this has nothing to do about M P O.
You all have your minds made up, that's fine, create your committee, but it's a sad day for this city, that our elected body cannot fulfill its role as leaders. You need a committee to tell you what to do, when you should take the time, devote your, devote your time-
We are the committee.
Don't just show up to the meetings and say, hey, I'm ready to make decisions. Devote your time to your community and give your time to get informed.
Why do you wanna, why do you have a problem with us committing extra of our, extra time?
Create your committee, you got the votes, create your committee. Commissioner Dray.
You know, I actually agree with Mayor Almada that we should do this on our own and take the time to contact staff, and I, and I completely understand the, the desire to have support structures and information and, and have experts who can provide us the information that we need, because none of us are experts in these fields, and we're trying to learn about areas that we don't have expertise or background in, and I can understand why Commissioner Gowen would want to have that type of structure. It makes sense. Unfortunately, we have limited resources, we have a city that is overtaxed with needs, and we have staff who is pulled each way and, and does a very good job, and remarkably, as soon as I said that staff did a very good job, my mic kicked in. And, the, the fact of the matter is, is that with our limited resources, it is sometimes difficult to get all the information that would be necessary to make the completely informed decision that Commissioner Gowen would like to make, and, and at the end of the day, it is, these are our decisions. The problem is, Mayor, and, you know, you've beaten it to the point that I just feel like voting with her just because I'm tired of hearing you drone on on it, and unfortunately, you have a lot of good ideas and some of it really makes sense, but the, you know, forgive me, but you wanna shoot the messenger. And, you know, Mr. Longoria, he, he was on point that, hey, these are things that we need to do, and maybe we can throw this over to, you know, United Brownsville and do something along those lines, where there is engineers and there are other people who are qualified to look at some of these issues, but this has just turned into a quagmire for no reason. And it's taken up twenty minutes or fifteen minutes of time when it's a pretty simple issue, and there's no real reason for this, and we talked about wanting to move forward and do the right thing as a group, and we've been trying to do that, but when we get bogged down in our own little, you know, I wanna hear myself speak the longest, and I guess I'm doing it too right now, you know? Where are we going?
Okay, listen to what he said. If you didn't have a mayor that stood up and said no, it would've gotten done very easily. See, unfortunately, I'm in the position of leadership. I see something coming down that's not good for the community, I have to, I'm obligated to, I have a responsibility to let this commission know, whether they, whether they listen or not, that's, the votes is votes, and I'll abide by it, but I have to say no when I feel that it's not in the best interest, and this community, I feel it's not in the best interest, and I'm telling you why. And the debate is healthy, the disagreement is a disagreement. At the end of the, of the, of the issue, the vote is cast, then you all will judge for yourself. If it's gonna be a committee, let them create the committee. I will vote against it based on what I, I said, but I think it's my responsibility to raise those points of concern if it is created, because it's not in the best interest of this elected body or the community as a whole. Commissioner Longoria?
I voted for you three years ago.
This has nothing to do with me, Commissioner.
Listen, listen to me, I'm, I'm talking.
You should not be attacking me.
I'm not attacking you, Pat, I'm just trying to state a point. I voted for you three years ago because we were gonna bring a change to this community.
You're out of order, Commissioner.
I'm not out of order.
Yes, you are out of order.
Well, put me out of order so the commission can give me the order back.
Robert Schule says not allow you to attack the chair.
I'm not attacking you.
You're supposed to focus on this. Whether you voted for me is irrelevant, I am here now, okay, and I'm fulfilling my duties, Mayor, by raising those issues of concern. Now, you can make the motion to pass it, you can make the motion to deny it, or you can vote for it, you can vote against it, or you can even debate the issue in a healthy way, which is good, okay, based on your opinion on the merits of the issue, but to be attacking me, whether you voted for me or not, that's irrelevant. Please focus on-
If you're gonna put me out of order, put me out of order so the commission can vote to give me back the floor so that I can speak.
The chair calls you out of order because Robert Schule says you're supposed to focus on this, not on the chair, you're not supposed to be attacking the chair.
I moved to give Rick Longoria a chance to speak.
Doesn't surprise me. So go ahead.
Ask for a second.
You got a motion to give Mr. Longoria the opportunity to attack the mayor?
It's not an attack.
You got a second, by Rose.
Do we have a second?
There's a second.
There's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I bow to you.
No, no bow.
I yield to you, and I will listen quietly.
We've wanted communication with you. In the last three years, there has been no communication between us and you. You take it upon yourself to go and act on items and on issues without insulting the commission. This commission works basically without your vote, and we wanna work with you, Pat, hell, I'm with you on this issue. You know, but it's just, like Tony said, Tony has his elegant way of saying it, and I'll just say it plain and calm, you know? If you weren't to be so offensive or so divisive about things, we would actually vote with you, Pat, because you do have good ideas, and I mentioned to you in the past, you do have good ideas, and you do bring a lot to this community, you just don't communicate with people, and that's your problem.
Well, in response, it should not be about me or anybody that sits in my chair.
It's your responsibility as the mayor of the city of Brownsville.
You're out of order now, you're out of order. It should not be about you, it should not be about any of us. It should be about our community and the merits of the issue, voted up or down based on how you see what's best for your community. It should not be about one individual. Your like or dislike about me is irrelevant, and I could care less. What I care about is Brownsville, building a better community, and exchange of ideas is good, a debate is good, disagreement is good, and I do not hold it personally. Many issues have been, come through here, and we disagree, and we agree, and somehow we go on, but to keep blaming me, that's not, that's not the solution.
Nobody's blaming you, Pat, you're not even an issue.
The solution to the city is the merits of the issue, vote on that, and please focus on that.
Pat, nobody's blaming you.
Okay, can we have a motion on this?
I, I wanna make a-
Can we have a motion on this issue?
I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to make comment.
I recognize Mr. Atkinson, what's your motion?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint three city commission members on the, on the volunteerism to sit on this infrastructure committee to work better with P U B staff and management.
Okay, Mr. Atkinson has made a motion, can I have a second?
We haven't read that item yet.
Let's read number fifteen if we're gonna do that. Okay. Oh, well, fourteen, okay, I'm sorry. Yes, I move to, to approve item fourteen.
We have a motion to approve item fourteen, can we have a second?
Second.
We have Commissioner Gowen making a second, any further discussion? All, Commissioner Turriani?
As I was gonna say a second ago, if we're just gonna vote on the issue and all we're looking at is the issue, then let's put the issues up front without droning on for fifteen minutes. I mean, if that's really what we're here to do, then let's do it, instead of going on and on about an issue. So now let's vote.
Okay, like I said, it's healthy to debate an issue, and I wanna hear from everybody. We have a motion, and we have a second, we have to respect that. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Two nays? Three nays?
Three nays, the motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, I will work with what you give me. Next item.
Item fifteen, consideration in action to appoint city commission members to the infrastructure committee.
Now, I'd like to appoint the three commissioners that voted for it.
Mark, can we do that? I don't see why this item's on the agenda since we just, we just passed it. Do we have to wait till the next meeting in order to appoint, to make those appointments?
You can do it right now.
Okay.
I'd like to make the motion to appoint the three commissioners that voted for it.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Atkinson to appoint the three commissioners, you wanna name them, please?
I'd like to, myself-
The four that get, the three that voted against it, you wanna put Rick, me, and the mayor on there?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're right, I forgot.
I mean, I'd be happy to do it.
I'd like to appoint Rose Gowen to this committee.
Name all three of them, please.
No, I don't, I don't know, there's three, who, I know I want it, anybody else doesn't want it?
I know you want it.
So you make a motion to appoint Mr. Atkinson, Commissioner Gowen, and who else?
I'll sit on.
Camarillo, Commissioner Camarillo, so we have three appointments to that board. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay.
I'm sorry, who was the second to this motion?
I'll be the second, if there wasn't one.
And the appointees are Gowen, Samora, and Camarillo?
Yes, sir.
Gowen, Camarillo, and Pat.
Charlie appointed himself, Commissioner Gowen, and Camarillo.
Hey, somebody has to hold people accountable, and I'm gonna do that.
Okay.
Who is it, you know who it is?
Now, the next, uh, next item?
Item six- Item 16, consideration and action to appoint members to the Brownsville Citizens Advisory Committee.
Okay.
I have a mayor, I believe you have three appointments. Commissioner Camarillo has one. Commissioner Trierani has one as well.
Okay. Commissioner Trierani, you ready to make your appointment?
Actually, I have my appointment, but I don't have a resume for her at this point. And so what I'd like to do is wait till next time and do that.
We can do it, subject two, if you'd like.
For this one, it would be Rubi de la Fuente.
Rubi de la Fuente?
Rubi.
Rubi de la Fuente. Okay. Mr. Camarillo?
Second. Oh, I'm going to reappoint.
You have an appointment?
I have, yeah, I'm going to reappoint Ms. Berta Alonso.
Ms. Berta who?
Alonso.
Alonso, okay. Did Gus Vaina Jr. and Carlos Hernandez...
Yes, he did. And Carlos Hernandez. I only have two.
Submitted two?
Right.
Okay. I will submit those two, Ben, and I'll, I'll do the other one at the next meeting. Okay? Okay, can we have a motion for approval?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gallin, second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any further discussion?
We have a suggestion. I was contacted by Mr. Lenz. I know you have a third appointment. I don't know if you already, Mr. Lenz, Daniel Lenz?
Daniel.
I don't know.
He's, he'd like to be appointed to serve on the committee. I don't know if you have appointment already, but I'd like to recommend him as maybe someone you might want to appoint.
Tell him to call me. I'd be more than happy to consider it.
Will do.
Based on what we have here.
Well, he's here, Mayor, I'm sorry.
I believe he's here if you want to talk to him afterwards.
This is not the place. I need to sit down. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, you just haven't called me, okay? Uh, next item?
Item 17, consideration and action to approve amendment number one for the 31st year Community Development Block Grant to Cadell Road Eight Inch Waterline Construction Project.
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners, staff recommendation is to authorize amendment number one for the 31st year Community Development Block Grant for Cadell Road Eight Inch Waterline Construction Project to Cubco Construction Incorporated of Brownsville, Texas in the amount of $57,400. Funding is in place, and it will be reimbursed 100% by the Brownsville P U B. This, this amendment is the result of the P U B requirement to encase a water line in concrete inside of a sacker. That's what it is.
Okay, this is an action item?
Would approve.
We have motion approved.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Trierani. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
Item 18, consideration and action to award a term contract for hardware and software maintenance and support services for the maintenance, for the Management Information Systems Department.
Staff recommendation is to award a term contract for hardware and software support services for the Management Information System Department, and that's M I S, to IBM Corporation of Smyrna, Georgia in the amount of $71,460 for the first year. Now, the negotiated contract will cover five years, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, onsite repair, exchange service, enhanced maintenance, maintenance agreement for hardware and software services, as it is stipulated on the master service agreement. Now, the price for the years two through five may increase or decrease depending on the items as they will become, they will come off warranty and, you know, the depreciation of those items. This contract will commence on April 26, 2010, and the contract shall expire on April 25, 2015. Funding for these services is in place.
Okay, any, this is an action item? Motion?
Would approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner Longoria. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 18.
Item 19, consideration and action to authorize a guaranteed maximum price contract for a construction package for the Brownsville Multi-Modal Terminal Project of the Brownsville Urban System Department.
Staff recommendation is to authorize the restated amendment number one for the guaranteed maximum price, which is G M P, for the construction of the Brownsville Multi-Modal Terminal Project, the B M T project, for the Brownsville Urban System, which is the Bus Department, to Spaldas Contractors Incorporated of Hartigan, Texas, for a total G M P amount, which is the guaranteed maximum price of $16,932,485. Now, this, this G M P is based on 100% design by Jacobs, the architects. This, this, the general contractor will be obligated to commence work immediately after receiving the notice to proceed, and they will, and they will, they will complete this project within, within 17 months of the date of said notice. Now, funding for these, funding for these G M Ps is in place already, and it will be derived from a, from federal and state grants.
Would approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 20.
Item 20, consideration and action to award a term contract for Transit Fleet Maintenance Services for the Brownsville Urban System Department.
Let me give you just a little briefing about this project. It is intent of the city of Brownsville to procure the services of an experienced, reliable, efficient, and transit-oriented contractor who will assume the responsibilities for all the bus fleet preventive maintenance and repair operations, and acquire the current bus usable parts inventory and manage the inventory of bus fleet maintenance and repairs. Also, the contractor will perform other functions associated with the safe and efficient maintenance of bus transit fleet. In addition, the contractor will provide all necessary supervision, labor, parts, supplies, and subcontractor required to maintain the transit fleet in a state of repairs and services consistent with generally accepted transit industry fleet practices. Therefore, staff recommendation is to award a term contract for First Transit Management and Maintenance Services for the Brownsville Urban System Bus Department to First Transit of Cincinnati, Ohio, at the stipulated prices on, on, on the agenda. The initial term of this contract shall be for three years and four months. First Transit Incorporated will commence work under this contract on the 20, 24th day of May 2010, and will, will end on the 30th day of September 2013. Now, the contractor might renew the contract agreement for three renewal periods of two years each, provided that the funds for the subject contract are available and the operating budget is approved by the city and the contractor has established a satisfactory record of performance. Funding for these contracts is in place, and it's coming from the Brownsville Urban System Department's Budget General Fund. Is there any questions?
Is this the old Jetsey contract?
I'm sorry?
Is this the Jetsey contract? The one that Jetsey held?
This is the, the transit contract for bus.
Is this the, the contract that Jetsey held?
No, no. Well, yeah, this is the contract that is currently with the Tecum All-Star.
Tecum, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Wrong acronym. We got so many. So, okay, so they will no longer be...
No, sir.
No, Tecum will handle the regular fleet.
Tecum will only handle the vehicle.
The regular.
We want, we want somebody to exclusively handle bus and bus only.
Transit.
Okay.
Transit fleet.
Thank you for the clarification. Appreciate it.
Okay, this is an action item?
How many, how many people went up to the...
This, this second time, only one contractor submitted a proposal.
Only one contractor submitted?
Only one. That is correct.
Not looking at the new business with us?
Not that I...
Do you link them?
We have a draft on the contractor, on the contract, I'm sorry, on the agenda. I stated that it's, it's a draft contract as part of the agenda. There's some revisions. It's still a draft. We're just waiting for, for First Transit to review the contract.
The current management company, and this is a subsidiary of them, or this is...
This is specifically for transit maintenance, management and maintenance.
It's management and maintenance.
That is correct. And we're going to have a city representative, Ivan Walker, to be the liaison in behalf of the city to, to be in contact with this vendor. It's going to be the representative in behalf of the city.
Excuse me, excuse me. City Attorney, have you reviewed this?
Just for clarification, the version 1.1, which is the version that was substituted, is the version with changes that the legal department made. So that would, version 1.1 would be the version that you were voting on, not the original one that was in your packet.
That is correct.
So this will substitute what's in the packet, and this is what you recommend?
Version 1.1, correct.
Version 1.1. Can I, can I have a motion to that effect? To approve version 1.1 as recommended by our city attorney?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Gallin. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any further discussion?
On version 1.1 or on the supposedly...
The motion was version 1.1. 1.1.
It wasn't in our packet.
But as recommended by legal, this substitutes what's in the packet. Okay, that was the motion I asked for. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item. 21.
Item 20.
We have a voter on this.
Yes, we did.
You asked for versions that prove the...
Commissioner Trierani voted.
I just feel, prove the contract based on version 1.1. I think that was very clear.
No, just Trierani.
Was that not clear to you?
No, that was not clear. That's why I asked for clarification.
Was that not clear to you?
I thought you were going to promote on version 1.1.
That's what I, that's what I thought.
We have no vote on the same approval.
Okay. For clarity's sake, Commissioner Trierani, can I have the motion to state?
I need a lot of clarification.
Can I have the motion to state to approve the contract based on version 1.1? Don't even get clearer than that. Can you restate your motion?
We're passing, accepting the 1.1, right? So a motion to approve the, where'd it go?
Mark, you're asking us to approve, to approve first version 1.1?
No, he's asking you to approve the contract is what the mayor's asking you to do, to approve the contract as is for management and maintenance by the entity that, the single entity that bid and was accepted by purchasing.
But the version won't...
With 1.1 contract.
1.1.
I would make...
To approve term contract, please do that.
I would make the, the version. I would make the motion to approve version, the contract as stated and recommended by city staff.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Gallin makes a motion, second by Commissioner Longoria. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Or you got, you got something to say?
Well, I guess my question is, is how do you, if you've got this multimillion dollar, what, what is the exact amount of the contract for management and...
Yes, I'll be more than happy to, to say. The, the, the first year of the, the, the amount of the contract, which will be, and I think it's explained on the, on the recommendation, it's going to be for one year.
It's track, it's maintenance, it's not management.
Well, he stated maintenance and management.
Well, no, no, it's, it's, it's management and maintenance because there's going to be, there's going to be a, a manager, a fleet manager from First Transit who's going to manage the mechanics. But the city is going to have a fleet maintenance administrator that is going to oversee the contract in behalf of the city with the contractor. The, the, the total amount of the first contract of the first year, which will be 12 months plus an additional four months and eight days, it will be $1,985,250. The reason why we have the additional four months is because we want for this contract to end on September 30th of next fiscal year. That's why, since we're at the middle of the, of this fiscal year, we're carrying over four months that it's, that, that remains on this fiscal year.
And this company is directly rated to our bus management company that we have in place at this time, correct?
Transit maintenance, to the transit maintenance.
So then now they're having, they're doing the maintenance and they're also doing the management for bus within our city.
Though I, I believe you're a little bit confused about two things.
I can be confused. Why don't you straighten me out?
Okay. We currently have a, a management contract for bus, for the administration of bus. Now, this is for maintenance, maintenance of the units, of the, of the fleet, the transit fleet. The reason why we call it management and maintenance is because there's, there's a representative from First Transit who's going to manage the mechanics.
Right, but we also contract out bus. Our bus management is done through another entity. It's not a city employee.
It's not a city employee.
And that company is, for the viewers at home...
But the person that is going to supervise...
And that company is, for the viewers at home...
I'm sorry?
That company is, for the viewers at home, that handles our bus.
That is correct.
It's the same company, right?
It is.
It's the same, it's a different division.
Robert, Charlie, can you explain why do we, why do we manage, why do we have a contract for management of, of bus? Why, why isn't it a separate, why isn't that a city employee? Why is that, why is that contracted?
We, we have a, we have a contract with First Transit to manage the bus system in the city of Brownsville.
But why?
That's been the case for many years due to the, due to the fact that years ago, when we had our own bus system operated solely by city employees, apparently it was not working well. So the, the idea was to hire professionals that understand the idea of how to handle a bus system.
And does that cost less than what we did? Is it cost less now than what it was when the city was managing it?
Well, I'd have to go back and look at that, but obviously, we, we pay a lump sum contract to First Transit, and they hire the, uh, three employees to oversee the, the operation of the bus system. The rest of the employees are city employees.
Right.
And, uh...
And the buses are ours, again, as per...
Right. to First Transit and they hire the three employees to oversee the operation of the bus system. The rest of the employees are city employees and...
And the buses are ours again as per...
Right. What we've been experiencing is an issue with our buses going down. We've been having a terrible problem with our buses. For that reason, we had a, we got a grant and we did a survey, a study to identify how we can handle this better. How can we handle the continuous upgrade and repair of buses as they go down in the city? The idea was to go out on proposals and identify any and all bidders that wanted to propose a bid to do repair for our buses and only repair our buses and not work on all the other fleet in the city. For example, our police fleet, our fire fleet and any all the city employees.
And that was a big issue during budget because that was one of the big issues that he was talking about, right?
Correct.
Go ahead. Excuse me for interrupting.
So, when we, when we went on proposals, we are recommending First Transit because they're one of the sole bidders on this and they are professionals at identifying and being able to work on buses. They have mechanics that solely work on buses. What we're going to do is we're going to oversee the operation by having First Transit, the maintenance portion of First Transit respond directly to the city over, with an oversight from Ivan, Mr. Walker, who works under the purchasing department, identifying any and all repair bills, et cetera, and assuring that we are getting the best product for our money. So, for, so we don't want, we want to be able to have the management of First Transit responding to the city.
Right. But as part of the, as part of the contract, they mentioned there's two individuals that are going to be managing, right? There's a cost for the two managers, our manager and then the manager from First Transit. Is that correct?
Well, we have always had someone assigned to First Transit and Tecum to oversee expenses and assure that we are, that we are identifying any and all expenses and that the city is being taken care of in that respect. That will continue with First Transit through Mr. Walker, who has been handling that responsibility for the last five or six years. So, that will continue. But what we want is someone to repair buses and only buses only and we want someone else to oversee the daily responsibilities of doing repair on the rest of the fleet in the city.
No problem, Charlie. And the only question on the, why we contract for management of bus, you know, just from Jeff and I before the meeting, no kidding, you know, we just, I passed him that same question. Why do we do that? Well, and so the answer wasn't really, and I mean, I don't know and I mean, it's difficult, but maybe that's something to maybe look at, you know, is it cost effective now, the way we're doing it or was it the way it was before, but we just needed, I don't know. But that's maybe something to bring back.
They not only, they not only manage our bus system, but they're working with us with delegates in Austin and things like that daily to assure that we're protected with the in-kind contributions that are offered to the city. As you know, the city does get a buck of money to operate this system and we don't want to lose that. So, they also work with us on that. Obviously, the employees that they have, all the expenses they have, their salaries, insurance and all, that's covered by the company and not by us. So, we seem to see, we seem to think that that is offset.
Very quickly, basically the 1990s, the bus system was operated inefficiently and that's why we contracted out.
Yeah.
And it's proved to be a wise thing to do. Okay, Commissioner Longoria?
It's basically echoing the same, the same comment that you're making. When I came into office in 2003, one of the first departments that I visited was with bus. And we looked at the history that buses had and from when they took over and their local representative being Norma Zamora, we have been able to do multimodal. We have been able to have a better transit. We've been able to feed, there's been able to be, you'll never break even, you'll never make a profit off, nobody does, off of urban, off of an urban system. But did it go up and were the service better than what it was in the 90s? Certainly. And it's, in my opinion, it was due to this company coming in and providing their service.
And that's a trend, we're not exclusive to that. That's a trend statewide and nationwide to...
That's not, that's not to include...
And I was here in the 1990s when it happened. And also, back then, there was the risk of losing funding and that's why we had the professional...
Yeah. That's not to include all the work that she does and her company does in Austin and Washington when we go. So, the reason we have the millions of dollars that we do to be able to do these kinds of projects is because of the work that they've done.
And I guess I don't have a problem with the issue because I know that we're coming up on the census and the issue and the concern about whether we hit 200,000 and whatnot with those funding. My concern is that we've got a bid out for maintenance and maintenance was such a huge issue. And then there's a question about what type of study was done on that because that's not addressed and we only have one bidder. And if you're going to get a competitive price, generally you would want to have multiple bidders. And that's my concern, is that we have a single bidder and the single bidder happens to be the management company. And that's where we are. And if it's the only person that wants to come down and work here, I guess we're stuck with that. But maybe, I mean, I'm not saying they're doing a bad job, it's just like, I'd like to see more competitive bids.
We went out on bids before and we brought it to the commission to reject the bids because we noted that we had bidders that were not, that were identified as not being able to handle the repair of buses. So, we went, we brought it to the commission, the commission was asked to reject any and all bids.
Send it out again.
We wanted a company, we wanted a company that knows how to repair buses. And we know that their mechanics are, there's certification that is required for mechanics that work on buses.
If you're going to submit a bid, you have to be qualified. You're saying this is only qualified bidder?
Well, we noted that those people were not qualified, so for that reason, we bought it to the commission to reject those bids and go out on bid again.
You also want somebody that's consistently with experience and the bonding and everything that comes with management.
They have to meet all the criteria. They have to meet, I don't know, I don't know how many companies are out there that can handle this.
I'm sorry. Okay. This is an action item. The motion was to award a term contract based on version 1.1 for transit maintenance services for the Brownsville Urban System Department. Is that right, Commissioner?
Yes.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Or you want to say something?
I want to say something, Robert Luna. I talked to you many, many months ago about us doing a study that would allow the city to handle the maintenance. Maybe not the management part because we know Norma's doing a great job there, but the maintenance part. We, and we sat down many times, right? And talked about what it would do for the city and how much money we could save for the citizens if we were able to do it ourselves. Was that study ever done or not?
Yes, we do have, we do have that staff. As a matter of fact, the evaluation committee, we put together also the study. Now, you've got to understand that to answer the question from Commissioner Troyani, we hire a consultant to help us with this process due to the fact that the first time when we went out for proposals, we received two proposals, but they were not qualified enough. The second time when we went out for proposals again, we brought that back and that's based also on the recommendation from this company.
So, what did the study say that it was going to be?
Can you come over?
Because if you're telling me the study hasn't been...
Can I try to answer that though?
Is the study completed?
Yeah. Can I answer that? The startup...
Answer me first, is that study completed or not?
The study was...
And what is the study saying? Plain and simple.
The study says, the study says if you go out on, you're going to have to hire all city employees, you're going to have to open up your own shop, buy all the equipment, all the equipment necessary to repair buses. It is a huge investment by the city.
Eventually, will it save money for the citizens of Brownsville?
Let me answer that. Let me remind, because I was, because I was here in the 1990s, Commissioner. I was here during 1990s.
Why are you stepping in? You're out of order.
Tires were disappearing.
Mayor, you're out of order.
Parts were disappearing.
Mayor, you're out of order.
No, I'm not out of order.
Let me finish my conversation real quick.
Tires were disappearing, parts were disappearing. It was running very inefficient. There was no accountability and that's why, it'd be like trying to bring back trash and buy the trash.
I totally agree with you, Mayor. I just want to know what the study said. That's all I want to know.
We run a study and we have a 1.7 if we do it in-house.
1.7 as opposed to what we're paying, what are we paying to contract it out?
1.4.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know, man.
1.4 versus...
Just want to know what the study said. We paid for a study, at least dollars worth. And again, we go back to the, why does First Transit handle the bus system? Because it's proven that that's the best effective way to do it. And also, the mayor's correct and even him saying, we had a terrible time when we had our own employees doing it. Turnover, you lose employees that are, that are trained to work on buses, they have to be certified. The expense of certifying these mechanics to work exclusively on buses is a huge expense. I agree with you. So, for that reason, the study shows, now, we also... Calvin, you had me at a low. I just want to know the answer, man. I just want to know, I got the answer? Well, I'm going to go back to Commissioner Troyani's request to handle this in 15 minutes, please. So, if we can vote, go ahead.
Mayor, may I just say one more thing?
Close it down.
Charlie, Robert, I appreciate the information of the study that was done. I don't think it's a bad thing to do these studies. You look at trash, we're looking at transit maintenance, you know, whatever was wrong in the 80s or in the 90s, and here we are in 2010, there's a chance, there's new leadership, educated folks, that we may have a better way of doing things. And maybe, again, in this case, it said, hey, it would cost you more. Great, no problem. But, you know, sometimes I feel that, you know, there's things that we keep doing because it's been done that way without taking a step back and reflecting and thinking, well, why don't we just try to look at this thing a little bit more closer and maybe there's an opportunity that there's, you know, something might work, might be more cost efficient. But again, and I just say that because I don't want to get too bogged down so that we never look at anything down the road, but we should.
No, we did look at it. That's why we can, we can identify those figures for you. But we feel that this time it's best to understand that we have a May 24 deadline to initiate a new contract with another, and for that reason, this contract is going to go into a 60-month period, the first one, the first year, is because we need to cover this year and then begin the next year's contract as well.
And this is a good example of what the commission can do individually to get with you and Norma and Robert Luna before the meeting and get a lot of these questions answered instead of spending 30 minutes or an hour on something that we could address, we could address before we got here. That's what I do.
We did meet with some of the commission before this meeting, Mayor. It doesn't seem to work.
Fortunately, it appears that need more information. But anyway, we got, we got a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion, we got one name. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 21. Consideration in action to authorize amendment number 39 to provide professional services associated with the rehabilitation of taxiway D and E for the Brownsville South Padre Island International Airport.
Stat recommendation is to authorize amendment number 39 to the airport engineering master agreement contract with HNTV Corporation to provide professional services associated with the rehabilitation of taxiway D and E for the Brownsville South Padre Island International Airport to HNTV Corporation of Overland Parks, Kansas in the amount of, it shouldn't exceed This funding, it's covered 100% by FAA grant funding.
Move to approve.
Okay. This is an action item. I have a motion. Commissioner Troyani, can I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, Commissioner Longoria. Any discussion?
Mayor, I have a question. Robert, under amendment number 39, when it looks at, talks about professional services, office payroll $36,367, office overhead $56,789. Why is that itemized? Office payroll, is that...
The thing is, they're just breaking down their services. You've got to understand this contract, it's a $3.5 million.
No, no, I understand. But office payroll, is that to...
Larry, can I answer the question?
Get the payroll, is that to calculate it? Is that to what?
The master, under FAA rules, the master engineering contract states that the engineering firm for each of the work tasks has to itemize all of those costs in the work task order and that has to be presented to the city commission.
So, on top of the consulting fees of the 87, their cost to do this is, they outline the payroll and all that.
They have to outline all of that. That's correct. And also, I would note to you, for DBE requirements, federal DBE requirements, they are required to outline all of their costs associated with that and they have to certify the payrolls that are submitted because those are also turned over to the FAA.
So, to certify the payrolls, we're going to pay for that as part of this, as part of their work.
Well, the FAA is, that's correct. I would also note to you, this is a $4 million construction project.
Any other questions? If not, can I have a motion?
We already did that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 22.
Item 22. Consideration in action on change order number two for the Federal Aviation Administration funded...
I think you skipped one. No, we already did 21.
21 is when we just did.
Larry?
22. Consideration in action on change order number two for the Federal Aviation funded Hurricane Dolly project contract with Klaasner Construction Company.
Mayor, city commission, the city commission is asked to consider an act on change order number two to the contract with Klaasner Construction Company to allow for improvements to a drainage ditch inside the airport fence as a part of the city's strategy of hurricane-proofing the airport. The city of Brownsville, by agreement with the FAA, is responsible for maintaining the drainage ditch facilities inside the airport perimeter fence. Because of increased security concerns, it is very difficult for the city of Brownsville's Public Works Department to actually access this ditch. This change is designed to improve the ditch so that the city's drag line can access the ditch and maintain it in the future. This project is 100% funded with FAA funds from the Hurricane Dolly grant. Airport staff as well as the airport advisory board recommend approval. I'll be happy to address any questions.
Let him finish speaking. Okay. This is an action item. Can I have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Yeah, motion, second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Hope you got who made the motion, who seconded it, Stella?
Yes, sir.
Item 23.
Item 23. Consideration in action to award a contract for purchase of 25 Motorola portable radios and 15 extra for the Brownsville Police Department.
Stat recommendation is to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of 25 Motorola radios and 15 extra batteries to be used by the Brownsville Police Department. This is going to Motorola Incorporated out of San Antonio and this is, it's in the amount of $67,043.75. Now, this procurement reflects HEAC contract pricing. Funding for this procurement, it's available from the similar 2009 era funding, Justice Assistant Grant, and it is in the amount of $66,179.88 and the remaining balance of $863.87 will be funded through the Federal Purporture Fund Number 28. Police Department recommends this.
Move to approve. We have a motion.
Sorry.
Motion, a second. Any discussion?
Charlie.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Longoria has an announcement and you'll wait for the announcement before the German.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'd like to announce that the Texas Transit Advisory just named Norma Zamora as the Transit General Manager of the Year for Texas today.
Hey, congratulations. Speech, speech, speech.
Well, it was a surprise to me, too. I was attending the Texas Transit Association Conference today and they were, I was wondering what was going on because I kept being told I needed to go to this event and I wasn't